Okay, roll call noting we are a full house minus our Hartland Lakeside seat, which we hope to fill next week at an interview. Any interested candidates, send them our way. We were properly noticed this evening. Jake and Kate, Jake and Kate. And we're going to go directly into facility and referendum report. Just for framing, we have under there update on visits to Madison area high schools on Monday. Big thanks to VJS and EUA who put together a really good day for a number of people. It's a large group from the administrative team, folks from EUA, VJS, and a couple of board members that toured three area high schools in Madison. One was Verona, brand new construction out of, I think it was 2017 or 2018. The next one was a renovation and build out at Middleton High School. Again, part of a referendum. And lastly, it was Sun Prairie, which was, I think it was brand new construction again. So we had good sneak peeks into what the likes of referendum dollars can do for school. So I'm going to open it up to anyone that went just for comments on, you know, perceptions and observations and things we can bring back to Arrowhead.
It's a little depressing coming back to Arrowhead after seeing those schools. If anyone gets a chance to see any of them, I would highly urge you to check them out. Verona in particular to me, really impressive because it's a same size school that we live in, the number of students that we have. Just unbelievable the investment that the community has made in their kids. Hope our Arrowhead community could consider doing something similar.
You look as smart as I do, just with the safety. We talk about safety a lot, but a lot of people here are a bit ahead of the meetings, but sure everyone's, but again, you talk about making it on your safety. So as soon as there's an intruder, we just had our active intruder drill today. So in Verona High School, newly designed school by EUA, as soon as there is an intruder, they hit the intruder, the intruder button, it shut all the doors in the school. Now that person can only leave the school, they cannot access more students. Students can leave the school and get out of the area, but they can't get into more students, right? So now you've limited the amount of damage that an armed intruder could possibly do within the school. It also allows you to control the access that the community has to your higher school. They're event, you think about our school, once they're in, everyone's in, access to the entire place. This allows you to segment off the school, make it a safer venue. Our students leave anywhere in our buildings, they're like traffic, parking lot. Schools with newer designs, smarter designs, they can move about the entire campus without ever crossing a street, without ever crossing a parking lot. There's huge smart designs like that. Other efficiencies within the school, we saw food and nutrition labs that connect with the actual kitchen that we use for food service, right? So we're all using it, creating inside like an industrial space that's already outfitted like that. We talked about programming that's more up to date, podcast studios, video recording studios, all in these newer buildings that have space and room. That was the light day when you walk in these buildings to start when you just don't have it. If you're a building, you notice it, right?
Yeah, I think, I think Verona was just spectacular. I, I, I heard, I think repeatedly during the day that the, the new environments are built with a heavy emphasis on adaptability and flexibility. So they, again, as Adam suggested, they build the spaces, put in there things that, our opportunities presented to the students there that we, we could only hope for. We, we cannot, we cannot do any of that. We don't have the space. We don't, we're extremely limited. And so at the end of the day, their, their students have many, many more and phenomenal opportunity. And as the job market changes, the spaces have been designed to be able to be flexible, to kind of change with, with the job market demand so that the opportunities can change for the kids. Again, something that presents a real challenge for us here. So it was, as Conrad said, this stark difference kind of presented almost a little bit of a sad contrast in, in what we're giving our kids as opportunities here versus some of the other newer updated schools.
Since I was unable to go because I work on Mondays, I did go on the other tour. Was it comparable to like a Cedarburg or Verona?
It's just bigger because
Yeah, more students.
Fewer students, but yeah, it's a fair comparison. Although to be fair to Verona, way better.
Yeah. I thought Cedarburg was really impressive.
It is, but Verona even more so.
The similarity there too, though, between Cedarburg and Verona, I found is that the schools are heavily branded. So you have this great facility, lots of branding, and I think the students and staff take ownership. And there, it, it really instills a sense of pride in both the student body and the faculty to be a part of that building. Again, something a little more difficult for us to share.
The other thing that I wanted to add, certainly the, the light in, in Verona was just, just amazing. You couldn't help but, but notice as soon as you walked in the doors that it was just, just filled with light in the sources. You know, you'd think that you would need this huge bank of windows, but there were even just almost like transom type windows that would provide a source of light almost in a center area of classrooms that you would think, well, they, they don't have outside walls. So how are they getting this light, this, this ambient light in there? But it's, you know, being, being naturally brought in. It was amazing. But the other thing that was, that was just phenomenal is their use of space. I mean, they're really economically using that space very well. The stairs that, you know, you get from one area to the next, not only are they stairs, but it's also used as kind of a study, study area for students if they have study time or they bring classes out there on these wide open spaces. Or, and I think, did you say Cedarburg sometimes uses under those, yeah, for storage?
Under the stairs, the storage for the ambient area.
Yeah.
Outside of those stairs.
So they really take advantage of, you know, all kinds of efficiencies there. That was just, it was really impressive.
Any other comments from anyone? If not, again, a big thanks to EUA and VJS and, and very much for all of our administrators who, it was an eight hour day and took a big chunk out of their time as our students are all going back to class. And it's not like you don't have something else to do with your time. So very much appreciate our administration and, and, and board member for being there. So it was a fantastic day. Uh, next up is the superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to, to Conrad Turner.
Yeah, very excited tonight. Mr. Harriet, one of our social studies teachers is here to do a presentation with some of his students on their trip to Greece. I can't wait to hear about this after seeing a preview of the slideshows. So, Mr. Harriet, it's all yours. Take it away.
Fantastic. Guys, I'll let you, if you guys want to go up there by the board. And just, I mean, background, especially because we do have some new faces. We've been doing social studies trips. I think we started around 2017 with a service trip to Ecuador. We then did a service trip to Tanzania, a service trip to Thailand. Then they changed things and we weren't able to do the same types of trips. We had COVID canceled Scandinavia. And then this was our next one that was to Greece, which was our largest trip. We took 60 kids to Greece. I was a little bit apprehensive at first. I love the service aspect of opening W4. Really cool to go to the developing world. But being on this trip, and I'm going to let the kids speak, was just eye opening for how incredible this can be for these students. So 60 plus of us, which is quite the challenge in some ways, but the company we work for or work with does such a great job organizing everything that we had zero issues. So we have Veronica, Vaughn, and Riley. These guys have been working on this since school started. They had homework on day one and they've done all kinds of things. So please feel free to ask them any questions as open as possible.
Great. Well, hello, I'm Veronica. I'm Riley. And this is my little presentation from our place. There we go.
Nope, there it is.
So we kind of cut out some of the travel days, but it was a longer flight. It was around eight hours, but it was fun. We kind of got to know everybody who was on the trip on those. When we landed in Athens and right off the plane, we took like one of his giant tour buses to visit the science temple, which is the bigger picture in the middle. Our guides did a really great job of telling us like the Greek myths related to this temple too, which was, it was related to like the Minotaur and how in Pyrenees, we watched from the temple to see if the sun would return and watch for his ship every day from the temple. So it was really cool hearing like the myths surrounding it and then getting to see it in person. And then there is a beach, like the temple is on kind of mountainish, which I also didn't realize how mountainous it was until we got there. It was really cool to see. But below the temple, there's a beach and we got to kind of spend most of our first day hanging out at the beach. It's really cool. And then later that night, we went to a Greek cultural experience. So this was in Athens and the restaurant there made their own olive oil and they had all of this very traditional Greek cuisine. And we got to listen to traditional Greek music and we got to see some traditions. Answers, which some of us actually participated in if you see the picture. So this, oh. So this was, this was my boyfriend, he's on there and he dressed up as a traditional Greek like soldier and he proceeded to dance.
All right.
In addition to this, we also did traditional plate mashing. So we got to throw plates on the ground and we're dancing on them. Amazing. It's very interactive experience.
Okay, so day two, after a long flight and everything, I'd lay one. It was pretty hard to wake up. We were up at six, but it was definitely the longest day. And this was the one where we got to see the most famous parts of Athens. And Athens is a huge city. So as soon as you're on this bus, you're going deep into the city, the traffic, people, everybody swerving all around you. It's a bustling city, but our tour guides, they're amazing. The whole time on the bus, they're telling us everything they can about the city and everything around us. When we get to the Acropolis, we, we get these listening devices, constantly talking to our ear. And the whole time throughout the few hours we're up there, they told us everything we need to about history and everything. And we got to saw and see the Parthenon on top of the Acropolis. It, it's way bigger in person when you're walking up the stairs. There's super steep. You can see the Temple of Nike, all the statues of Athena. And you get to walk around anywhere up there. There are barely any fences or anything. You can go up and see everything. After a few hours up there, it was hot, but it was, it was a great time. We went down and we got some free time. This was our first major free time during the trip. And we were in the really old center of Athens. We got to go shopping. Probably get scanned at a bunch of those little shops, but and we got to go and eat at a really nice restaurant that cleared out all for us. And after that, we went to the Museum of the Acropolis, which is probably the most famous picture is that one in the middle with all the statues. But one of them is missing because it was taken by the British Museum. But it's a huge museum and the top of it is actually a one-to-one scale of the Parthenon on top of them all. And then after that, it was more walking, I agree, but we went to the oldest street in Athens. It was one of the prettiest streets I've ever seen. I think I have a picture all the way on the right there. Those trees covering it, there's again, more shops. We got a lot of free time. Us three and a bunch of other people who went out, explored the city. We were in what looked like the city center. There was like, it was, it was cool. There was, it's clear the area with the fountain and we got to just shop anywhere and walk around. And then that was day two.
Yeah, uh, the oldest street, Baca, was really cool because it was like a city, like a normal city. And then all of a sudden you would see like rivers from ancient places. So it was really cool. Where you were walking around shopping. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Pretty knowledge. Hi, Kay. Basically experts now. Um, so day three, we went to Crete, uh, which was really cool to see from the plane since Greece is like a string of islands. It was really cool seeing. You could kind of see where you were leaving from where you were going to, which I've never flown anywhere like that. So it was really cool. But we visited Knossos Palace, which was the, like, one of the first palaces in Crete. And it was famous for its three red colors because the color stood so long. We have a picture of it up there. And then afterwards, we went to, oh, sorry. I forgot the most important part. The palace had the first working toilet.
Oh, that is important.
That was a big highlight, which I guess I would be excited too. I all of a sudden.
That is important.
And then after that, we went to the Parthenon. Sorry, I'm really, I'm still bad at the pronunciation involved with it. But it was an archaeological museum and it had a lot of the original frescoes that were in the palace that were just preserved as well as other like pottery stuff from around Crete, which was really interesting. We had our own specific tour guide for Crete. So we had two tour guides that stayed with us all crap. And then in Crete, since it was a new city, we had a tour guide who specialized in Crete and everything that was there and she was really good at explaining all of the history that was in Crete. And then afterwards, we had, sorry, we had free time in Periclea, which was a really cool, cool city. It was a lot more, I guess, urban than like spread out than Athens, which was pretty big, the difference between two islands. And then we also had free time in Paris on us, which was where our hotel was located. And our hotel was actually in such a cool spot because it was right along the beach too. So we had the option to go to the captain on the beach. It was really fun and really creative or there was more of like an urban side that you could walk around.
So did you guys think that? We saw McDonald's. We didn't think they were even on the island, but we saw one driving back from May City to Crete instead of the yellow. We want to see that in our town. There was one instead of Big Macs, they had Big and Tasty's. Most people got a little sick, but they were
Just like, yeah, that makes sense though.
Yeah. For Big Macs, they use like white cheese instead of the yellow one and then different sauce.
And don't worry, that's not the only place they ate. Those boys just ate and ate.
Was there significance to the red in that? I mean, aside from the fact that it, of the longevity?
It was a Minoan palace and I think that was just one of their like distinguishing colors. So it's all over the palace inside. We have a picture of this throne room up there. It's a toss and the red like it's just in most of their frescoes.
I think it was an availability thing too. It's one of the colors that they have. Which is a lot of the Greek islands too, that's a pink, it's just available.
Like in their, in their stone, yeah.
I'm pretty sure their art comes from the clay, the ground, the rock, the red soil. So they were able to
We didn't put a photo, but at that site, there is also what they claim to be the oldest road in Europe, which was road from here's the little town to that palace. We couldn't go on. It was overgrown, but it was actually the first road ever.
How? Did they call it the throne room? Cause that was the first toilet.
It wasn't thrown. All right. So day four was Spalona Island and this was a leopard colony island. So when Greece had, you know, when they were really big, they had an outbreak of leprosy. And they were really scared. So they sent all the lepers to this little island called Spalona Island, which was previously a Vatican, a mission island. And so these lepers had to live there up until about World War Two. Right? So they were living there. They just had to reproduce. They weren't allowed back in society. So we took a boat all the way there. But you can see a little green flag there. It was like a little ferry. It was like a little ferry. We took so many boats all around these islands. Drawn beds and not enjoyed it. I got a little bit sick. I went through my drama.
Yeah. How was the water? Was it pretty rough or?
I've been growing boats, so I wasn't used to it, but it was pretty calm.
So, all right.
There's a lot of curvy roads. We were going up and down.
Those can be rough. Yep, okay.
And then we took a walking tour of Agios and this was an amazing experience because we got to experience more culture. It was a very urban city. So it was just a lot of restaurants, lots of little shops here and there, you know? They sold little trinkets and things, you know, there was a lot of persuading. Everybody's ready to buy things.
Were they pushy?
A little bit.
Were they like aggressive?
She was, she went to this store and we put lotion on her. I'm like, where are we lotion? And she was like, I don't want it. I don't want it. And Billy was like, let me just even it out. And then we went for free time in Heri's. That's where our hotel was. And that's just, we just went back to the same hotel. So we could either go back or go back.
That night, I had octopus, so.
Wow. So you were adventurous too. I mean, not just McDonald's, but That's fantastic. Good for you. That's great.
So day five was another waking up early and this one was something I was really excited about because there's something I've never been on a high speed ferry, which could go forty miles an hour. Very fast. We drive from, float from Crete to Santorini. And there's a picture of some of my friends on the back of the boat because the whole time
Titanic. Oh, I like that.
King in the world. Awesome. That's awesome.
That's like the bus. We got off the bus. That's how high up like the buses would drive around. It's again, like the curvy roads I don't know. And then also
Those drivers were so impressive.
Yeah, a really good day because we went to another room. It was air conditioned. So it was all covered. We didn't have to worry about and our tour guide there was awesome. She talked about everything. There's another toilet there that she talked about. Cool downtown area like thunder, but we couldn't, it was closed off that day. And then we got to go to the biggest town on Santorini, which is Skura. And again, there's more shopping, gelato, heroes and all of that. And then that night, we went to our hotel, which is pictured in the middle there. That was the best hotels, the biggest, it was pretty, it was nice. And then we went on the beach that night and they offered us this lasagna dish. It's like their Greek version of lasagna. I don't know. They had a picture of it over there. They claimed it came before they town lasagna. They were really keen on that. Probably got to the best beach, you know, the black sand beach.
Oh.
It looks when you walk on it because it's so hot. Seeing the sunset and everything. And there's all these like nice beds you could lay on. It's like a day they charge you for. I was there.
Do want to add that the picture right there, that is considered Greek Pompeii because of what you know, actually could be covered. That's it's the best excavated archaeological site. So it's the best preserved Pompeii.
That's on the walls indoors.
Yeah, but unfortunately, it just used to be able to walk through the cities and like the walls were still up and everything, but an earthquake actually collapsed the roof onto part of it. And it broke all of like the foundation of one of the buildings and everything was collapsed. So now you just kind of walk on ramps around. But even the parts that you could walk on with the excavated parts, that's only like top of third floor buildings because the town was so covered in like volcanic ash and everything. And they're taking so much time and care excavating it all that they like aren't even to the first floor buildings yet at all.
You remember?
There's still a lot still under the ground, but they've only excavated. I think it was a third or? Yeah, like they have a third.
Do you remember when that was?
That was when we went, like when the volcano happened. And it was before Pompeii?
It was a while ago, but it was the whole island.
It was before Pompeii?
The island is broken up into three parts. There's a little island here, the main island, and the one in the middle. It used to be one circular island, but it blew up because of the volcano. That's, it's like we went to is the best resort ever far. It was the biggest and there's only chalk.
That's, that's
Day six, we had the opportunity to get up at five AM. After getting um, to go watch the sunrise on the beach, which was so worth it. I've never seen a sunrise like that before. It was
Yeah.
That is a valid question.
And plus with the time change, it was, you would end up laying in bed.
Can we agree you were into the next?
There was also a music, but I was prepping every day because we only had one bag. Like we had one bag, everything, everything you bought. So I became a master packer. And I was just like reorganizing everything. And then you could get a zipper bag. Oh, I didn't have two people spit on it. Oh, it was some jumping too. We got it though. It was okay. Um, and then we took, a day took to the tallest mountains from Santorini. And on the top is actually a chapel. If you look at the, the picture, and that is the entire road all the way up. Here, here. Let me tell you enough. That was, that was probably one of the worst. That was out of my drama. But there's Riley in the pink and then our friend Leila up taking a photo. And that was really just a great experience because it was a chapel up there. So we could, we didn't get to go in the chapel, but we can look on the outside. And then after we took some free time and a walking tour of Gonia, which is, when you think of Greece, you think of Aueia with the blue church, you know, with the roofs and the whites. So we took some beautiful pictures over there to see. And this was very crowded. It's a very popular tourist area. So it was very, very busy, but we still got the most of it. We saw lots of beautiful restaurants and lots of beautiful views. That was probably one of my most favorite days. That was, I've always wanted to go there. Yeah.
So day seven was really unique. We hadn't had much for this day. So by I think day five or six, we had a decision. Either pay fifty euros and we could go to volcanic hot springs or we could sit and relax on the beach town that our hotel is at. I chose the beach town because on day five, we had met a guy who said, you give us a beach table if we got food. And usually beach tables are only a hundred dollars. So if we take thirteen dollars for euros, we want a beach table. And that was our last day of euros, which was sad.
I mean, yeah, I followed that logic right there.
It was the last day in the black sand beach sucked. I loved it. And swimming there, it was so nice. And there's a picture of some of my friends and I on those tables. And so, yeah, that, that was pretty much already relaxing and then take a bus to the airport.
So we both went to the volcanic hot springs. We also hiked the volcano, like that was the first part of the excursion. And we took a boat to get there, which, uh, there's a picture of Veronica on the boat. She was not really enjoying it, but. I thought it was a little funny, so. Then we hyped up the volcano, which was pretty cool. It wasn't what I thought a volcano would look like. I think I was expecting something out of like a history and science there. It was not that. It was kind of just like a hill, a really tall hill. But it was really cool. The view from it was really cool, and it was nice to meet nature in Greece and and then we went to a hot springs with Veronica. So we took our boat to the hot spring, which you can see pictures on the, on your right. Um, and the water was so warm. It was incredible. Cause we jumped off the boat because like the boat couldn't get into, you see like in that top picture where it's in blue and then turns to red. The boat could only stay in the blue. So we had to jump off the boat, and then they gave us little noodles, and we swam all the way to the hot spring. It was like, it was like two minutes there. Um, noodle, and it got so warm, but it didn't turn our baby sweet red. But it didn't smell, so that was, that was.
I was expecting.
Wow.
It was just really warm. It was great to relax and then got back on the boat and put back. Yeah, and then when we got back from the boat, this picture, we had to take a gondola ride back up to Santorini, because Santorini is on top, it's not a hill, like a whole mountain thing. So we had to take a gondola ride up, and it was really cool seeing the city. Then we flew home. So we, Mr. Harriet made us a little video. So if you'd like to, if you're a Greek man.
A question. Um, just, just, even though Greece is just kind of such a cradle of civilization, birthplace of so many things. Did you make connections there? And that fed into where we are now and in our history and our country. And what, what were some of those connections?
We, we went to the, um, Theopopolis, the the temple of Athena. No, no, the women. Okay, the temple of Athena. It had, um, all of the women out in front and the Chicago. The one that was in the World's Fair, the facade of it, they took, um, inspiration from temples. It was really cool to see.
That's very cool.
I'd say other connections are tour guides. We're, we're still connected. I'm kind of, Mr. Harriet sent a video. One of our tour guides telling me was that the Olympics were participating for.
It's in the US Open.
US Open.
Oh, wow.
And yeah, so, and they, on the last day, they reminded us that, you know, if anything happens in Greece, we know to go there.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's what I was thinking. I'm sorry to go down.
No, I was just saying that, that's a, a great, um, thing to, to think of. That, yeah, that you have a connection that far across the world.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's our mess, our message when we leave is they, you, in all our trips, they get really tight with these guides that we have, because we're with them twenty-four seven. They don't leave. They're with us the entire time. And then just that sense that if anything's happening in the world, it's not just this random far-off place, but like, I know somebody, and you know their family, or at least you hear about their family and things like that. So that's been very cool. I, I still talk to kids from back in twenty seventeen, and they're still in contact with people from back in North Africa. That's great.
You guys are really balanced up there with your presentation. You guys all did amazing. And yeah, I like the way you cut off of each other. I just have one really quick question for you, since you're very knowledgeable now. So if you're from Crete, you're called a Cretian, right? If you're from Chersonosis, what do you call?
That is in Crete, so still, yeah.
They were very adamant that there's a look, like you're not, if you're from Crete, you are different than, from Greece. They literally pointed out, see, these guys all are the same.
Less of a tourist island than all the other ones. So they'll still have a pretty big and active population even when the fourth season is over. And Athens, most of it kind of ties down a little bit, being a treat. So that was the big thing about Crete more, to have more of this, um, like California, the almost.
Thank you.
Great job.
That was fantastic.
So well, I wanna go on a field trip now. I mean, we just went to Madison, but, I mean.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna move on then to, um, item number two under the superintendent's report. Uh, just have an update on the block schedule thus far.
Yeah, it's, it's still early, uh, to draw any conclusions. We certainly had a great first week, uh, great first few days this week. Really smooth considering all of the changes that have been implemented, allowing, uh, some of the building administrators provide more, uh, specific details since they've been out in class more than I have.
I think the, um, the feeling, we talked about that for several years, about, um, the hustle and bustle of the time here today. And it feels different. It felt different from the very first, first day of school. It's calmer. Um, students have eight minutes between classes, and I would say on the whole, they, they've recognized they're not sprinting. Um, the, the, uh, just a lot of, uh, active learning occurring in our classes, um, continuing to, um, help develop the active learning strategies and deeper learning strategies within our curriculum. That'll continue to be something that we learn and and consider and reconsider throughout the school year. But it was really, uh, the comments just in the hallway. The first day of school, I went into the, um, second lunch period, which is a later lunch period, just to hear there was quieting or, or people were upset. And I, I didn't hear, I heard a little bit of a grumble, but, but you know, while I'm hungry and I think kids have adjusted. Um, but yeah, I would say from my vantage point, uh, from talking with staff and some students, it's been fairly smooth. We've had some bumps, but we'll continue to have some bumps this week as we learn this year, but it's been.
And small sample size, uh, I talked to a few students, uh, just to add up. Or student athletes, and they've said that they, even right now, there are a few AP classes, and the benefit of that is huge for them. They, they don't feel that stress. Um, so that's, that's something that they're actually realizing living, which is good. I talked to a few staff today who are, um, probably in that middle pocket of our, um, support for the block schedule on, uh, trying to get it figured out. And, uh, both of them said that they feel, uh, dread, it's, uh, it's a different feeling. I think that's kind of the word to keep carrying. They are, they are loving it and trying to figure out how to best manage the time, right? And that's, that's a longer process. So uh, we say it's a small sample size, it's a really small sample size right now. It takes months to, uh, even a year or two to really hone in, uh, that structure now. Uh, our instruction is still strong and just, it's just mirrors, uh, sometimes mirrors last year, right? And so the evolution of that takes time. So I don't feel like, uh, our, and I don't think our staff would say that anything has been lost, I think, that we able to do now.
My sample size is two. I have a freshman and a sophomore. I know, or I'm sorry, a senior and a freshman. And my senior said, it was like, he appreciates the, you know, this the seven or eight minute between class periods. I hope you have to, you know, people can actually go to the restroom, you know, maybe less disruption during class, kids go to the bathroom. But I also had some ideas. Is it a full lecture? Is it combination lecture learning? Both of them. He just said that we have time to do a homework and answer questions. I think it's, especially with my seniors. Very.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, another piece is we have, we have a really truly fully experienced. It's the first seven, eight resource periods we've absorbed, right? So we use them as home rooms to, and we did our safety drills as, uh, focusing today, today and yesterday. We did some learning about how to use the resource, uh, app, uh, yesterday or, uh, three days ago. So they've entered some lessons. They had an opening lesson. And it gets, you know, you kind of think so. Our students still haven't even felt that effect of having the opportunity to connect with teachers, um, in that morning period as well.
This week will be kind of the first.
Watched.
So when your kids come home, it's, it was both be and lonely in that first.
Today was my first time in the drop-off line, and I thought, I was anticipating it was, it was actually not that bad when I went to. There were four people that were trapped, you know, many in this room.
Money though.
No visiting, no chit chat.
You know, when you get in the car.
Alright.
See him again. It's an hour.
Just, yeah, just slow down enough to, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Glad to hear it. It sounds like, you know, it won't be anticipated. Small amount of bumps, but you know.
Open the door.
There will be. Every day, but, but I mean, it's, you know, I asked at our faculty meeting today, like, I'm really pleased to hear, I mean, staff have been forthcoming and, and sharing what's been positive and what they're excited about, and they've been really, about different problem solving through some of the things that they're, they're experiencing, your curricular instruction, or some of the pieces of resource period that we're anticipating as we um, roll into that next phase of that. So I mean, uh, what's really deep, I think, is the opportunity to problem solve as a team of staff and administration together. We're in, you know, um, you know, some administrators have experienced the, the research period in other districts, but for a lot of us, it's our first audit year. So everybody's very self-sufficient. They want it to be good for them, for, for students, um, uh, as well as important, basically. So student sailing is the goal. It's just, everybody recognizes when it's new this year.
The teacher's giving feedback on the students through various surveys and other feedback groups. So that's, that's mid, they don't have to.
Does block scheduling, um, cause any, um, different challenges for, um, students who wanna change or add a class or drop a class, or does that cause any?
Expand the time by which they could drop classes this year and change their schedule, um, which also means.
And it, and it all fits together. So you're not like, I wanna take a, I wanna drop a fourth period class that is a forty-minute everyday class. And the class I wanna take off is in every other day class that runs seven, eight A. And now you're trying to be like, well, if we're into a seven, eight A, now we gotta find something that fits into this forty-minute down here. The fact that they're all on the same time lane, it's easier to put the class.
It's easier to, okay.
Yeah, so like, there's a student being with his mom on Monday. They're like, he might have some of this like, see this going on, diagnosed, we want to look at it. We'll look at it, and if we need to make the change, we can likely take him out of IEM third period, flip him into the eighth period, and then get him into our, um, blockchain streaming system in third period. And that would have been probably a lot more difficult to do when we were running all these different kind of class schedules. Now it's just like, I see it, it's there, it's there, and I'm pretty confident.
Oh, well, that's great.
To adjust some, um, you know, some of the programs like dual enrollment, um, programs that we've had with Marquette or WCC or Carroll or so forth. They operate on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule or a Tuesday, Thursday schedule, and we're at every other day block. So we did in the spring, I mean, just in full transparency, run into some scheduling issues with like data structures, for example, Marquette University. But I think for the most part, we were able to find alternatives for those programs at other schools through UW independent learning or some other a dual enrollment experience on the whole. But so it did present challenges, um, you know, trip be told on the schedule side of things, um, but.
Also an opportunity to meet with the family just before school started. And I'm not saying it's, could think their daughter has seven D class. And that would not have been possible in last year's schedule. The conflict is overlapping. I have no doubts this student will be fine, just knowing the family, but, um, but that is not enough. That would not have been an option for that, for her at now. She's gonna walk out here. One credit possibly.
She's still have a heavily ranked, uh, student position probably at this.
Students were impacted because you were saying like the WCTC and Marquette, with the Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday. Dual enrollment and WCTC, that, that tends to be, that, that tends to work. I think the, the main conflict came with Marquette and data structures. And we looked at a million options with them, and, um, and in the end, kids could have, and then, you know, they just had to make decisions within their schedules. But whether that was a priority for, you know, another class that you could hear in your own head, so.
And departmental, uh, department-wise, those are, uh, they will in which department do those courses?
Computer science.
Science. Is computer science the only department where you experience some level of unanticipated, uh, uh, conflict in scheduling?
On the whole, I would say yes, because we had such a large amount of, now, like, there's seven stu, eight students, I think, who, um, were enrolled in data structures. And I think about half of them ended up having to make other arrangements. Still taking computer science related or, or even, uh, different data structures in classes at universities. It's just, that's been a long, fairly long-running partnership, and we asked for their flexibility. They offered different sections to us. They offered other, other classes to us, which was all great. But if they are on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, for the most part, that meant two blocks a day, and we're gonna be dedicated, um, on those days to, to a course and on the other, the day block that's.
How does that work? Is a student like virtual with Marquette, or do they actually physically go?
No, they were virtual here.
Oh, okay.
They could, they can do the, the opposite, but.
They're like a dedicated class.
Anything else?
It'd be nice to maybe hear like an update again, like in December, after you've had like a semester of your belt.
We'll be doing some surveying of students, I would imagine, and of staff with some, you know, some more detailed. We'll look at, at the semester, probably a quarter as well. We'll look, continue to track, um, break rates, because one of our metrics is for decent host of resources. We'll be reporting on it at some point.
Great. So in the hallways, when they go from class to class, I remember being in the school and we toured around it, and it was like crazy. Is it much calmer now?
Still crazy, third intersection.
The students also know that they have.
Yeah.
So they're a little more casual. They, you can just see it, like their shoulders drop a little bit, right? And they're talking to their friends. They know that they can stop their locker, grab a snack, go to the bathroom, whatever that do. And the, the biggest difference, I think, about the halls is the bell ring.
Oh.
Like we, we have never in, in some time here, you should never see that because we had so many bells, so many different times in class. Our bell ring.
You know, I, I was thinking about that, Adam, with the, um, because of the block scheduling. Um, so then, do you think that students on the whole will be using their lockers more frequently? You know, we were talking about locker usage.
The ones who use them, use them, the ones we don't, don't.
Okay, so that won't, that won't like tip the scales, like what we were talking about on Monday. Okay.
No, because they still, I mean, it's, still they're, like a backpack is even, they're even less necessary now with coming three, four classes a day, right? So they can just out in their car at home or whatever.
Okay. Alright. I was just curious. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you for the update. I appreciate it. Good to hear. Things are going well.
Um, prior to, uh, going to the public comment, um, with the board's approval, I would like to scroll down and, uh, direct everyone to finance.
I would like to scroll down and uh, direct everyone to finance legislation committee report B. Uh, potential action on the possible sale of South Campus building. Uh, with the board's approval, um, I'd like to move it up to our time spot right now. It's we have a. Representative from E U A here, uh. Uh, gonna be running point on that, uh, along with uh. Uh, Chairman Miller. And it would frame him up for the rest of the evening, so.
That's fine. Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
Perfect. Okay, so I will then turn it over to.
Yeah, we met on August twenty third to really discuss the pros and cons of potentially selling South Campus. Uh, it was a topic that was brought up in the last board meeting. We decided to take it to committee. Uh, some of the pros, um, obviously the potential saving three million dollars in the demolition cost of this building. Should the referendum pass and then uh, the opportunity to potentially sell it for upwards of ten to twenty to thirty million dollars. Depending on whether or not we think that we can get that for this build. So we feel like. Uh, from a due diligence standpoint, it's important to potentially uh, send this out for R F Ps. To brokerage firms to understand what we could potentially get for this building. Uh, that will be the motion for tonight to send it out to R F P to uh, essentially get a potential cost for this building. Uh, some of the cons, I don't know if you want to speak to these or not, but you know, we talked about um, extra stormwater management being part of this process. Losing valuable land and additional turf fields. Um, so with that being said, we wanted to push this forward to um, committee. And the full board to get approval on the R F process for the.
And by way of introduction, uh, we have Charlie Roberts here tonight, uh, E U A. Kind of help. Uh, add background to.
Yeah, you nailed it, Chair Chairman Miller, uh, with the the cons and the pros. Um, the one, the one con I would add to that is just less future flexibility of the site. So if you do choose to. Expand uh, for whatever reason, you have. Buy less site, you have therefore less flexibility. Otherwise, you can have the other cons with additional stormwater management. Um, you know, if the buyer even exists and if they would be willing to purchase. And then currently at the contemplated referendum doesn't include. Uh, does that underground storage things because they're so considerably. Uh, they're considerably more expensive than traditional just.
So uh, the end of the day, if we engage brokerage firms, it would be at no cost to us and it would be a good indication for. Potential value of the building and then we could come back together and discuss. Hey, you know, if they say we could get thirty million dollars for this building and there's a potential tenant that we could put in here. We'd at least have a number and and understanding for what we'd be potentially walking away from if we didn't want to do that. So that was the idea to engage the brokerage firms. That's what the motion will be for today.
What kind of timeframe will we look at?
I think it would probably take two months.
I mean, I think there's, there's no harm in finding out. It doesn't hurt us in any way. Where, if you're looking at that map, where would the cutoff be? Do we have any ideas on like? That's what they would, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Yeah, just building.
I could speak to that. There are zoning requirements and. And as a result, you know, we can't just cut the building out. We would need some side area there for impervious surface. I'm sorry, pervious surfaces, side area in addition to the parking lot that would be required. Uh, just just by zoning principles, really. Uh, so it would be much more than the building. Uh, not to mention. Uh, on the proposed plan for the referendum, we have two lacrosse fields and a sizeable fire retention basin. Uh, where south would be otherwise removed. And so we would have to, if that was parcel off and sold. We would need to find a home for those two lacrosse fields and as we discussed, the underground stormwater manager.
So have you gone this route and the, as a means of kind of determining the market for? Uh, whole school building before. Produced in R F P and asked brokers to be the ones that guided the valuation of the.
We haven't, we were, we have worked with the district in the past that was trying to sell a school building for. Almost eight years or a decade and. But that's an anecdotal example, so the straight answer is probably.
I mean, in our F P to a brokerage firm, one of the one that I would have expected to value. Might be an excellent gauge of, oh, there's a market on.
Yeah.
If I were advising a client on something like this. Uh, we'd go and pay for a commercial appraisal. It would be expensive, probably five to ten thousand dollars. Um, but what brokers can give you in the way of. Value on something like this is. Kind of dependent on what their motivation. Right? Because they're trying to land a commission based contract and so. It's in their interest to tell you that it's worth, you know, twenty percent more than. What it's worth so that they'll be the highest ones, like they'll sign the contract. And if there's only one. Or you submitting an R F P, then they're incentivized to give you a realist. Loan numbers that they can sell quickly and don't have to. So, um. So I'm not opposed to the idea of asking them to tell us, you know. What they could do for us and what the. You know, market is for uh, just school building, um, but I think that. If we're. To say we want to head this direction, we probably. Full appraisal and uh, more scientific.
Yeah.
And um. Chairman Miller, who who would be spearheading this?
Uh, well, I think Jeff would spearhead it and I would help, I mean, on his workbook.
Well, Jeff, wouldn't you kind of know what this is, like to assess value with the taxes and everything like that?
We don't pay taxes.
Well, I mean, the assessed value, would would you know that or?
I think where the broker terms would come in to play is we'd get a range, potentially four or five brokerage firms that would say. We think we can turn it into apartments or we think we have a client that would want to demolish in the building and pay ten million dollars for it to go. They want it or now they're on my comment and say. We don't even want it because we don't think you can sell it. So I think the value that we can get out of at least engaging brokerage firms. They know the market, whether or not there's buyers for this and whether or not. But the range could be in terms of. What could, that actually happen to this. And I think what we do is we come back together and say, oh, here's one option, here's two options, here's three options. Do any of these options pan out? We want to proceed down one of these paths and if so, we would. To your point, engage that firm and get an appraisal and confirm it. And if not, we just walk away from it because the cons are pretty significant. There's no doubt in my mind that we would be selling valuable land that we never get back.
And and that is a really significant thing. In fact, what what comes to my mind is is the Monday uh, bus tour. Of the three facilities, the swills that we visited, two actually mentioned. That they had sought acquisition of additional land to really try and accommodate everything they wanted to and. Uh, another one expressed that they're looking at that and they were uh, they almost felt it unfortunate that they didn't have enough land to accommodate. What they wanted to do and they didn't know how to to get there. And so again, it it gives me real concern, I think, to. Know that we are so landlocked here, uh, we, you know, we've got. With the referendum and whatever uh, preliminary planning we've done to date. We've got land usage pretty detailed already for every last space that we have. Uh, to consider uh, selling any portion of that. Gives me concern. It's my opinion. Although I I appreciate, I I understand why this is happening. Brought this forward uh, in an effort. To um, ensure that the public knows we're looking at every option possible to try to. Curtail some of the expenses that we're facing uh, with uh, the project. So I, I appreciate. You know, uh, that in mind.
Well, and the other benefit would be, you know, we do at least have, we at least know the number or. Whether or not we want to do it for even a future. Aid which. Let's be honest, this referendum may not pass, right? We do get to planning this second potential option or whatever, whatever else happens in the future, we at least have a number. You'd understand what this area is.
I think more knowledge is always good. I don't think, as long as, having, having said that, as long as it doesn't over overwhelmingly tax. People that are already.
Yeah.
Not monetarily.
I I think that's a real concern as well. And and again, coming out of committee, another thing that we did talk about, um, we already have. Uh, probably too much heat on the plates of our administrative team, um, and to add more at this point. Uh. Again, I think it's a. It's a, it's a, it's a challenge. It's a concern that I don't know we want to do. So Jeff, with insurance, would you have any idea by that or is everything under the envelope, like north and south? You know, and our land for insurance purposes, it all one total or?
No, each building is insured separately. So they have, we put a value on both buildings, separate values. Sure for a certain value.
But you don't know what this one.
So you're having a new billing that's going to be insured at the, a similar value because the square footage is.
Yeah. I'm just saying you don't know what this would be from the insurance, what.
Well, it's insured to replace, it replaced the cost of a building. So it. Two hundred billion.
Yeah. Right. I always keep thinking this could be like a middle school, you know, with feeder schools, you could combine. Three feeder schools like North Lake is losing students, you know, they don't have a lot of classrooms or anything like that, you know. North Lake comes here or maybe another middle school combined. I don't want you to cry or anything. You look like you're. The whole thing is.
But I'm just thinking, you know, it's like some middle school right by a high school. I don't know. I mean. And I know we brought this up in committee too, but it was like, uh, the potential neighbors that could be moving in, like who is that going to be? So.
Yeah, but we're not deciding.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm like, I'm thinking long term, right?
If we get a big number, we all think that it's real. Those are the tough conversations that we'll have to have. We'd never get there unless. So I don't think there's a whole lot of risk other than Jeff's time. Like I said, I would be more than willing to volunteer to help. Take that load off. That being said, I guess I'll make a motion to approve, uh, moving forward with an R F P process to engage brokerage firms in value in the sale of South Campus.
A second.
Do, can I ask a question of Jeff? Do you have any idea, Jeff, on on what? What kind of time commitment this might take? Ever sold the building. I've done appraisals before, so we're. Um, sold our land. That took a lot of time. I was setting up a website, but if a brokerage firm is going to take on all that advertising and things that we did on our own.
Yeah.
All we paid was legal services on sale of the builder property. So that was a lot of time, but uh, I'm not sure. No, I don't have a testament. I've never done that before.
Do you think the brokerage would give us like a breakdown of the process?
Well, sure. Here's how we would, we would send out essentially an email. The five things that we're asking for, we've asked for, um, what they would list this building for. The likely range in the sale price, right? You listed for a certain, you know, you'll probably get less than that. What potential buyers they would have for this, who they think would be an occupant. Uh, timeframe for how long they think it would take to sell. Six months, maybe five years. Uh, what their commission rates are. And then how they would market the property, what's their plan, what their plan be to market it, whether they market it on a state to a potential corporation that would. Put up a home here, how would they market the property? So we'd send out an email to five brokerage firms and that's an requirement to come back with our perspective. And hopefully they respond and come back with answers to all those questions and. A plan for how they want to engage.
Can I ask a question? So then as part of that process, um, do they come in and tour the facilities?
Yeah, it's part of it. Next step, there are definitely some tours, but we have a lot of, we have a lot of video, we have a lot of pictures. And we have filming. So a lot of that we can.
Just as part of the referendum process, just they can review what's already been done? Okay. Yeah, I I don't see the harm really in in doing this, just to have that answer. It'll be the second round, that'd be.
But it'll come to us first to have further discussions into that.
So they would be looking to tour this.
Potentially, yeah.
Possibly. Okay, so again, you know, the the harm is that we're going to be putting additional taxation on already taxed individuals in this school. And you know, um. I think we have a lot on our plate. People are working really long hours. I'm concerned about adding, adding to those hours. To be really busy staff. And I don't know.
Tours are going to have a couple hours per tour. We don't have. We could go and get plans. Didn't you guys make plans?
We have, we can, we have tons of documents that we can share.
Yeah, you have had to, you have had that all right.
I'm sure we do.
And you did the video walkthrough?
Uh, we have a matter for video walkthrough, but it's, the facility was so sizable that there. Yeah, they could, they, we could share that information.
So there would almost be not, there wouldn't even be a need to.
If so, if there's interest in like potentially five different groups or five different realtors. There's a lot of information we could send them first.
Yes.
Before we could, we would whittle it down and potentially have. X number of interested parties.
Can I ask you a question, Jeff? I was just thinking, you know, with the referendum, we're asking for two hundred and sixty one million. What if this building sells? Can you apply some with the cells to lower? The rate for the taxpayers? Is that how they would get money back?
You could use the revenue to offset the costs.
And we would do that or would we keep the money? Yeah.
You gotta remember, it's, it's one time land.
Right.
You know. Got a. Finite space right now. We don't have the builder property. By, you know, thirty million, I don't see it, but maybe I need to talk to some brokers and find out, maybe that's. That that's a shocker, even ten million is a shocker. When we struggle to get two million on the builder property, nobody got to tear anything down. And we're landlocked, so I I know districts when they have to build or expand. They're paying a high price for land when they need it. People know the district needs it. They're gonna get every penny they can out of that district, right?
So in other words, what you're saying is if we're to go down this path. Then you ultimately have to be sold on the idea that we would. Sell the property and we would.
Definitely ready for that.
Yes.
Ready to sell.
I mean, yeah, otherwise, why would we, why would we proceed with the process? So again, one has to be prepared. Sell it if if this is a road we're going to go down. And again, we we have a a finite amount of landlocked property here and uh. Really have to be. Ready for uh. Less property ownership.
I'm not afraid of the work. That's not an issue. It's. Do we really want to? We have to be ready. Are we ready to cut out our our South Campus at the end of the football field essentially? And and lose. That part, they're going to need the parking. Cut this parking out here, see if I can get the space for the softball field, you might be able to keep that. But I mean, where are we cutting this off? That's the space we lose. Now our traffic entrance. Must we create an easement, you know? A little more complicated than I think. Sounds.
Yeah.
But it's worth uh, maybe at least acquiring with some brokers and saying, is it thirty million? Because then it might, it might resonate, maybe thirty million one time. You're going to go by property, ten acre property, simple sales or twenty acre property, simple sales. Are you going to be able to get to thirty million? I'm gonna. You know, ten years or fifty years down the line, what are we going to pay for that, that property again? We gotta think about that too, long term. Oh, I just remembered, didn't the quarry that we voted on for the tip, and that's all for about 10 million, just the land recorded? I remember.
Good.
Yes. Nice piece of land. Quick trip. Yeah, quick trip, over there. Maybe quick trip.
Yeah, I think it's.
I don't like the village.
To me, I think it comes down to what is the, the value of this property to Arrowhead in the future? So if that value is, to Arrowhead is under 10 million, it's probably worth looking at. Maybe if we don't, if we don't need, you know, but filter property, to me, 2 million, that we might, we might be rethinking that, you know, if we had hindsight on that. We might need that land 50 years from now. You know, and now we gotta go look for 40 acre property someplace. We're gonna pay more than $2 million for that 40 acres. Yeah, I mean, the counter argument to that from, you know, just thinking from a devil's advocate standpoint. You know, if we do get pushback in the community here, it's, you're only rolling, you're not gonna beat some land, that type of stuff that we always hear. John, I'm saying I agree with him, just playing devil's advocate here, I just feel like should check that box and see if you looked at it, if you want to do it.
I think the due diligence makes sense.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, but at the same time, are, how, how serious are we about selling our property? You know, and how, what kind of decision is that for this community? Is that a, is that a high-quality decision, long-term for the future of this district?
That's gonna be an interesting conversation.
So there's a motion and a second, right?
So are there any other discussion?
The motion is to explore, or to, this is worded a little differently.
Engage, I think, uh, to engage in an RFP process.
We wanted to just make sure the agenda, because it, it says, uh, possible action, uh, the possible sale of South Campus. You want me to, you want me to re, rephrase the motion?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll just, if you've got that written out.
I wrote it down, so this is exactly what I said, motion to approve moving forward.
Yeah, maybe you should.
I'll retract my.
Well, this is the statement. I'm just repeating what I said.
Oh, okay.
I still want to go off the idea. So motion, this was the motion to approve moving forward with an RFP process to engage brokerage firms in value in the sale of South Campus.
Any knowledge?
Sure.
Okay, why don't we do a roll call vote? Start with Summerlang or?
Yes. I abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know.
I abstain. Yes.
Yes. So is it?
Oh, abstain, abstain, no, no. Yes, 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 yes.
This is.
Yes.
But.
There we go. We can do things.
Do we count?
I don't know, yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Thank you, and thanks for, uh, plumping us up on the, uh.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to public comment. Okay, uh, looks like we have two signed up for public comment, we're gonna forego all the requirements here, I think everyone has been here in the past and knows the scoop. So first up is, uh, Kirsten Doyman.
Hello, excellent, good evening, I'm Kirsten Anderson, and we are, yeah, we're together. We are Arrowhead Gas, we formed a advocacy group to advocate for the referendum questions that will be on the ballot this November, which we're obviously all very familiar with. Um, we are doing a lot of things to educate the community, we probably set up information sessions, uh, pass along information to the administration for, uh, community members that we are talking to that have an interest in, uh, something at their house, or at their club they're a part of, or any sort of event they, um, might be going to, age weight meetings, that type of thing. Um, we're also, uh, giving out yard signs, I hope you are all starting to see some of these, we may, we started to see some of these in the community. Um, we've been engaging with local businesses about getting some larger banners out to, um, spread the word and just the, the local, you'll see it around town. Specky and I have also been trying to connect with, um, local theater school PTOs, not for them to advocate, but for, uh, getting up access into their local schools, so we can reach, um, you know, theater schools that need to be arrowhead. Uh, and we are, we're working on a door-to-door campaign, uh, so hopefully your door door will get back done, and your neighbor's door will get back done. Um, we just wanted to formally introduce ourselves, I know we've all seen us at these meetings, uh, we're from an official committee, Arrowhead Gas, so if you're any community members reaching out to you to support the referendum and would like to get involved our way, we have a website, arrowheadgas.com. We're also on Facebook, um, and Instagram.
We have people for that. Lots of volunteers for that. Uh, any questions?
But I compliment the artwork.
Yes. We have people for that too.
I'm sorry, you said arrowheadgas.com?
Yes. Arrowheadgas.com, all the word.
Uh, yes, I, have we considered it? Have we done it now? Have we considered it?
Are there other advocacy groups that are out there, are you aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
So it's part of your.
Yes. We, we either one advocacy group, and we've, we've, um, filed other programs for work, which we've stationed all those things, so I haven't heard of anybody else, we actually are from Slim T too, so we're grabbing, we're grabbing.
Well, and we've talked with other schools to have gone through that, and we've talked with, um, people at the state level who also help and support your grant something. And they, they strongly recommended you try and only have the plan. So everybody's on the same page, and you're saying that they marketed it, everything, so everybody is really joining together. Which was the tour of one, one of the groups.
I would echo member Langer's comments, but, because I, I was, I think it was, I don't know, I'm not sure. It was just off of Highway 16, I can't remember what the county road was, but, I mean, it, the words just like popped off the sign. And I was going 45, and I knew what it was.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
In a 25 mile an hour.
In a 25. I mean, was it a 45 mile an hour zone, jokingly stating that?
Comment on the, um, conversation you all had about the rental sale of South Campus? This is just coming from interacting with community members, but if you are going to engage in that, which is something you are going to do, I would make sure that you communicate something or put something out somewhere, because people will find out when you're doing this, and there will be a lot of certain and disrumpled individuals, uh, from athletics, because that space is going to be used for field space, there are tennis courts there, it blocks right up the football field, I would just, the baseball field is back there too, I would just make sure that there is some very clear communication about why you're doing that, and what, what is going on with that, because, um, we hear daily from the athletic community about what's happening with this field, or that field, or what building goes here, and so I, I guarantee something, something will.
Or feedback of the filter sale, and leaving that property, a lot of community members actually were not so excited about. Yeah, again, it's just, I appreciate the due diligence, um, but I think that the value of that land trumps my attempt to point out.
I would just speak for the rest here.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, thank, thank you, thank you for being here.
Luckily you guys are here so you can help share some of that information with your.
Yes. Okay, uh, next up is, uh, Gabe Lucas.
Hi, Gabe Lucas, I'm Alex, I'm a freshman, a junior here. Uh, my daughter is sitting on principal's cabinet, uh, and is planning on bringing this topic up there, I thought it'd be good to. She's gonna like to vent here, to vent here. Uh, so the recent shootings at Apple High School have been an alarming thing. Uh, and also last year's false alarm, uh, raised, false alarm incident raised concerns about where this coming is. My daughter appreciated the training and drill conducted this week, she said it was a big improvement over the previous years, and for sure I want to thank, uh, the administration for the great job and hard work on that. As if anything else, especially something like safety, it always, uh, should obviously look for ways to improve. So, uh, I've got a few points I wanted to share, it's not, I'm sure, assuming you'll bring it up. Uh, so first off, I'm gonna, I presume that you're all familiar with the statute 2807 regarding drills and procedures. But beyond that, uh, I'm not sure how many drills are planned per year for Arrowhead, as far as I know, it's one per year. And we're, with my discussions with my daughter, uh, maybe once per semester might be beneficial, and better allow lessons learned to improve practice. Especially also like the format of the training, having the training one day, and a drill the next day, she thought, uh, another good position, so that might be to review campus staff during training, although I'm not familiar with campus, I could stay a few, looking at it for context of evacuation, like. Uh, I think another good addition would be having a parent's version of the training. I'm sure a lot of parents have already, uh, talked to their kids about what they should or shouldn't do in that type of situation. Uh, and there's more transparency and reassurance of what training and being given to students, it would probably help, uh, with, uh, that on the sessions. Another point is that I understand that there is a family pickup strategy in place, uh, I personally don't know anything about it. Think the board should maybe make sure that this strategy better communicates to parents, they're all better prepared, and that's the reason you're not inundated with a lot of, with scary parents trying to, uh, hurt kids. Another thing I think that would be beneficial would be an after-action review after following your ele. Now, there's a lot of things you learn during a drill that you could have never imagined, uh, being a thought experiment. So, uh, yeah, what went well, and how it improved, what didn't go well. And I think it'd be, it'd be critical to include students, staff, any emergency responders for this review process, because they're all gonna have different perspectives and see the things. But see and hear things that, uh, first responders have to produce. Perhaps you could form a safety committee that, that participates in the after-action review, any size on necessary risks. Or perhaps an online survey for students to submit their observation. Well, there are a lot of other points we could discuss here, but I don't think this. So it's not a place to go and go deep dive. But I think important things are, uh, to have an emergency plan that everyone understands, uh, for all students, uh, parents. Uh, the drills are conducted, uh, to practice these, but, uh, there's a review process to learn and approve based on observation on drills, uh, and then students are an active participants in those actual, after-action reviews, along with staff. So again, like I said, I want to thank the board for, for, uh, talking earlier.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone seated that didn't sign up and would like a moment to speak? If not, we will move on to, uh, our consent agenda, uh, which consists of uh, the August 14th, uh, regular board meeting, it's the bill payments report, our donations list, the personnel report, and our, uh, agreement, uh, for eighth grade math teacher kind of, uh, service screening with, with.
It's a governmental agreement.
In terms of governmental.
It's a real one, it's almost.
Okay, um, if I could, uh, turn it over to member Anjali at this point to go through the donations?
Certainly, thank you, Madam President. Um, we have, uh, several, uh, to go over. I'm just amazed to say, um, so the first one would be Ace Precision Machining, um, for the Technology and Engineering Program, $5,000. Amazing, thank you so very much. The second one, Susan and Tom Korkowski, to the Broadway Company, $1,000. The next one, Mouse Magic Travel LLC, again, Broadway Company, $1,000. The fourth is Wright Construction to Broadway Company, $1,500. And finally, Milwaukee Brewers Broadway Company for the amount of $2,500. Thank you, everyone, that is just, that's amazing.
In true theater form, jazz hands.
Jazz hands.
Seriously, that's amazing.
It is.
Go Broadway.
Mm-hmm.
Can't wait to see their show.
Yes.
It's amazing.
Yep, they do just amazing work. And loved seeing Chaviano again on the list.
Yeah, and, and thank you for, to all of our 26th staff.
Mm-hmm.
Quite a basis. Um, I'd like to leave it up to board members as to whether or not the 66.0301 agreement, uh, is an annual agreement. It's through this, I don't know how many years, but to our newer board members, if you would like, uh, uh, superintendent partner to weigh in on the meaning of that, and add a little more depth to, uh, that agreement, I'll look at you. So it's relatively self-explanatory. If not, uh, then we, uh, have our full consent agenda. Yep.
I, I wonder if we could just pull up the personnel, uh, report.
Personnel report, absolutely.
Only because it's, it seems kind of peculiar that we've got, uh, uh, August resignations. Is there some sort of organized effort to be noticed? But, we don't, we don't customarily get resignations in August, I mean, somebody obviously may be like.
Well, it's actually happens more and more, um, as time has gone by, post Act 10, and things like seniority and other contractual things kept teachers in a district a long time. Um, the hiring season has evolved from my early experiences as administrator, you have almost all your hiring done by the end of June. Now it keeps going because of the domino effect of one district hiring a teacher, veteran teachers will move now, like before they didn't move, and so when a veteran moves, and you gotta find another person to replace in that district. There used to be a pool of young teachers coming out of college that helped supplement those hires, and there are so fewer teachers going into teaching now, or fewer people going into teaching, that you're actually getting more veterans moving, and the hiring season does extend into August. These are later than anybody would ever like, but it is becoming more common. I had some cases in Sabre where we were hiring in September, um, just because you can usually trace some of these vacancies back to a resignation, five districts away that happened back in March. But because every district starts hiring and hiring and hiring and hiring, it does end up happening later and later in June. So, and all of these people signing contracts back in June. Uh, yes, so. Are there liquidated damages that were, absolutely, will we enforce that? Absolutely. How much are you charging? 3,000, I believe. But the challenge is if we're not working for another public school district, which a couple of them are, if we don't believe are, we don't have much leverage. Is that the leverage point to make people pay that is, under state law, they can't be in a contract with two school boards at one time. There are letters of resignation, uh, emails or letters with an explanation. Uh, one, one got a job in another district that the, like I said, was exactly, she can't control when that opening happened, so applied for that position, and they offered it this late. Um, two of the other ones, we believe they just took jobs in the private sector, and didn't really give us any explanation.
So then, just to extrapolate off of that, but it leaves, of course, the score. So then just to extrapolate off of that, but it leaves, of course, the school hanging in the lurch for teachers to fill those immediate interviews, correct? Backfill those positions.
Yeah, it puts pressure on the administration to get those positions posted and try to hire if there is a quality applicant that does apply. Or it calls on the teachers that are already here, wind up taking overloads for an indefinite amount of time. Could be a whole semester, could be a whole year. We would try to fill the positions still throughout the year, so we can minimize the overloads, but. It's actually not a bad thing for our students if they're getting a quality educator, teaching overload. I'd rather do that than hire somebody that may not be as quality of a teacher, because this isn't the time you want to be hiring from a general pool.
Are you doing more overloads this school year compared to past?
Oh, no, because of the schedule change, we have far fewer overloads, actually.
Okay.
Many fewer. I don't.
A lot less? I think we're down about two.
Yeah.
We had like twenty-six last year. I think we have five, all five districts.
Yeah, it's a significant reduction, but we just added a few, I think three because of the science. Hiring situation, we're spreading those classes out among our existing staff.
Prior to that, we had two.
So Frederick Rausch was a teacher before and he's coming back, is that?
He retired, yep. We had no intentions of coming back to teach. We were actually going to use him as an aide.
Yeah.
Of supervision. He met the requirements of the state in terms of the separation rules they had to before he could get rehired as a new. Collecting new attention with the state retirement system. And thankfully, he was actually willing to step up and come back and teach for the semester. Because he really felt like this wasn't a very good deal for the kids to have that teacher leave so late. So our kids are good veteran teacher who knows the system, knows the kids. He can't do more than the first semester because of the rules on the retirement system. But that could be a nice bridge for us. We want to go, hope to find a graduating senior in the December grad, as they call them, to come on second semester.
That's great.
Or we could go to an overload similar to overload for science for the second semester. So we have options, but it does put more strain on the system when people resign late, no question. But it is becoming more and more common.
Has anyone resigned since this report was published?
No.
Anything else on here, Tim?
Nope. Sorry, I did have another question. For some reason, are we approving them? Minutes from the last board meeting here, for some reason they're not linking up my agenda.
Was it taking you to the board, Doc?
How about we circle back to the consent agenda for better use of time? I get that. That's okay with everyone?
Love it.
And we will move on to. Curriculum committee with our Chair, Chairwoman Temmer.
Sure, thanks.
That was snarky.
Thank you, Madam President.
Snark.
Okay. So we had a very, as Chris Ferris likes to say, robust meeting on the twenty-second. And a lot of time was taken up with a discussion on the graduation date, and that was brought to the attention from Kim, actually. Who was concerned the graduation date always seemed to fall when the Arrowhead track was at State and La Crosse. So a lot of those kids, they could decide to come back and graduate, or they could decide to stay in La Crosse and get their awards.
Darn those talented track kids.
I know. So Adam Kurth presented a chart. It had four different options of what we could possibly do for graduation. And we discussed all those in great detail. And there was one that stood out, and I think that was the one where seniors would graduate earlier. And you guys were, the administration was going to look into that to see how that would affect seniors and the learning time. If the minutes would still be there or not. And I don't know if you've done anything yet, but that was the one option that we thought we'd look into this. However, the graduation will still remain the same for this year, and we'll look into the other option possibly next year. And maybe the track team won't do as well, so we will pay now.
Discussion part of what came out of our tours is if we had a field house like some others.
Right, yeah.
Whether our challenges, we have such a large student body and community that supports that student body that we have to hold it outside.
Yeah, so we are kind of limited that way, our Saturday, Sunday. So after that, which did take up a great deal of time with our committee. And then Adam Bolt reviewed the Arrowhead citizenship lessons. And the first one was probably presented, Adam, is that correct?
Yeah, both of them, I think the link on there, link on there, that the first one was on September, September or third day of school. Went off compliments from the teachers on that lesson presentation. So seems like a strong well. Again, we talked about with the school safety topic of the day. The number one way to make our school safe is to treat everybody with respect. And so while we had yesterday, today dedicated to save school safety drills, I mean, we as a team believe that the. The conversation of our school safety actually happened with the citizenship lesson too, we're saying, you know. Treat everybody with respect. Nobody's going to feel like I'm doing harmful stuff to ours.
Yeah, at least you presented slides on the presentation to us of the committee, and we were all in favor of it. It looked really nice. And then your next. Yeah, the next one is empathy.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else to add, or?
No, just like I said, so you saw the first two, we got approved both those, then with three or four are ready.
Okay, great, thanks. And then Ryan Megan was in, and he was discussing overnight athletic events. And what he was asking for guidance on what the board should or should not be involved in. Should we vote on every trip, or you know, can we narrow it down? And what we decided was that overnight athletic events. The board should only be involved when it comes to cross-country travel. And we would then decide the, we'd vote on proposed dates. Well, we'll still be voting on dates for upcoming travel in September, but then the policy will be adapted for future. And it would only be for cross-country travel, like when they're going, I guess the basketball team was going out east. Or Field.
Delaware.
Delaware, okay. Well, out east. Same thing. So. So it would be that type of thing that we would be involved in. So he doesn't have to come to us every time with a presentation and say, oh, can you say yes or no? So that's good. And then Sue talked about Act ninety-five updates. And that's the rankings of students with the grade point average. And you mentioned that thirty students are tied to first place. And the DPI does offer a waiver for tie-breaking issues, and you were going to check on that, and if you want to add any more about.
Yeah, I mean, there's been a lot of concerns raised by families and seniors who are applying to in particular Madison. With the ranking process that the state legislature. Put in place, and we've just simply given advice to apply as you normally would, what was sick applications are still. Certainly valid at UW Madison. So we're going to learn a lot about the impact of Wisconsin guarantee on admissions. So if the board chooses to or wants to, we can look further into those tie-breaking mechanisms. Continue to look into that.
Yeah, and didn't you mention like looking at ACT scores?
That could be a tie-breaking mechanism that we use if we wanted to do that. We can use the March state accountability ACT to apply for that.
Okay, and then you spoke about the Mastery Content Curriculum.
Mastery Connect. So yep, we have a new data portal that we are launching this year with our. Mostly with English and social studies, but other subjects that matter, subjects as well. In which our teachers are developing assessments aligned with standards, and then that creates these data boards. For us to progress monitor how we're doing in particular with reading, arts. Standards, and so it is a work in progress and started and. We'll be using a benchmark ACT through mastery next week. So another step that our folks are learning and.
Okay, and then we heard about the National Assessment of Educational Progress, otherwise NAEP assessment. And then we kind of talked about just.
Sorry, did I say too loud?
That was rather snarky. It was snarky again. So we really didn't get into that as much. We'll still be talking about that at the September committee meeting, so that'll carry forward. Yeah, okay. And then for, I think that was it for that meeting. Future agenda items, we've got a Flex Resource Planning Program presentation in October. And then the September curriculum meeting will have, well, we just spoke about the NAEP as well as. Anne had brought up an eighth, ninth grade transition to Arrowhead. What are we doing? What more could we be doing? Do you want to add anything to that, or?
No, just that a parent had approached me after speaking with someone at Merton. About what happens during, you know, what she has currently eighth grader at Merton. And who is heavy in the T and the E of STEM. And you know, what, what can she plan for when her daughter is. Getting ready to come over to Arrowhead and time to schedule classes and things like that. She'd asked someone at Merton, and I'm blanking on the name right now. But she asked, is there like a parent night or something that kind of gives an overview of what classes she should choose and things like that? And the teacher said, no, I'm, I don't think there is, but you should really spearhead. She said, maybe you could spearhead something like that. And then she came to me, and I'm trying to think back. Which is what I did. Yeah, in my email, I said, I gave her your names. I gave her your business card, and I gave your name and your name. But I also said that I would follow up because I was not comfortable just saying, contact these people. Because, well, because that teacher just said, you should do that. Yeah, which I understand that. I understand what you're saying. But I witnessed her kind of getting like brushed off, and that made me mad because I thought. Seriously, you're telling her to go, like she should do this? No, this is a school. You're an educator. If you don't have that answer, you should go and find that out for that, that parent. And so that made me mad. So when she came to me, I said, I'll find that out. So if she doesn't, if she doesn't contact me, fine. But I thought, I'm at least going to come to you and say the questions being asked.
We've got this all covered.
Which is fantastic, which is great.
At the end of the day, we'll review it.
Yeah, we just want to know what it is so that when that question comes up, we can go, here's what it is. Here's what it looks like. Because, I mean, you could, no, that was the absolute wrong answer. That that teacher, and I know who that teacher is. I've seen her. She's been there for years. But that's the wrong answer to say, you should start something like that. Oh. What?
It doesn't make sense, but.
Yeah.
I'm happy to, happy to walk you through what is done and what's shared, and the more people that understand the question.
Anything else, anything else from anybody else, or? Okay, well, the next curriculum meeting is Thursday, September nineteenth at suit forty-five. Thank you, Chairwoman Temmer. You are welcome, Madam President.
Much nicer.
Appreciate your flexibility. I think we'll just keep moving on through committee reports. We'll head right into the remainder of F and L with our Chair, Charlie Miller.
That was it.
Okay.
Need to circle back to the.
Oh, yeah, we're calling back.
Right, well, we, yeah. So report, did you want to go through the report? Was there anything else?
No, I, that was.
You covered everything. Okay, and we're good to go. And at this point, do we have another F and L meeting on the?
Yes, we do.
The books.
It is next Monday.
Super, okay. Thank you. B and G?
No meeting this past month. We have the next meeting scheduled. It'll be a special date on. It'll be Monday, October seventh. If there's stuff that you would like to have on the agenda, please.
Chairman Vannaker. Personnel Committee with Chairman Weiner.
We've not had one this last board meeting. I'll just, this is the last board meeting. And there was not one of the schedules yet.
Moving on to Policy Committee with Chairman Ferris.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a very non-robust meeting. It was very quick, quickest policy meeting of all time. We went over a few just the things that we're going to have discussion and action for. Some recommended policy changes to Policy Thirty-three. A recommended change to eighty-six oh one with controlled substances for people that are transporting our kids. Want them using stuff. Let's see, the committee reviewed Policy Twenty-three forty. With, in tandem with what Amy was saying about trips. And district sponsored trips and transportation, that whole piece. So we're just going to have a discussion and action about that one as well. See, future agenda items include consideration of policy language that is still ongoing. Nothing yet solid there. Next meeting's October first.
Excellent. Thank you. Short and concise as well. Okay, so our first discussion action area is that. On the following topic. The old Policy Thirty-three dash two recommended changes. Meetings. Policy, the annual report. Educational outcome goals and expectations, Policy Twenty-three forty, district sponsored trips and transportation. Policy Thirty-one twenty point zero four, appointment to public substitutes, Policy Thirty-four thirty-one, employee leaves. Policy Fifty-two hundred, attendance, Policy Fifty-three thirty. Administration of Medication, Emergency Care. Policy Fifty-four thirty, class rank, Policy Fifty-five oh five, act of honesty, Policy. Seventy-five forty, certified assistance technology and services, Policy Seventy-five forty-four, use of social media, Policy Eighty-five hundred. Food services, Policy Eighty-five ten wellness. Policy Eighty-five thirty-one, free and produced price fields, Policy Eighty-five forty, vending machines, Policy Eighty-five fifty. Food sales, Policy Eighty-six hundred transportation. Policy Eighty-six forty, transportation field, other district sponsored trips, Policy Eighty-six sixty, transportation by private vehicle for district sponsored trips. And Policy Eighty-six eighty, transportation services contracts. So there was language changes in there, and what I'm looking for is a motion to approve. The language from those particular policies. Make a motion to approve all the policies as mentioned.
So, so any substantial changes?
No.
These are regular updates that NOLA provides, a part and service that we pay them for. Because as policies are used for different cases that might occur throughout the country. If there's a legal change that happens at federal or state level, if somebody just has some kind of experience. Again, in the states that NOLA serves, they'll create the language slightly to make sure that it's staying as current and usable and puts us in the best possible.
It puts us in the best possible position to defend ourselves against any liability. Kind of exposure. So we'll get these twice a year where we update our policies. And if there's ever anything substantive, we would let you know. And we bring it up at the policy committee if they view it more thoroughly there.
Sure.
But otherwise, everybody can access these in uh board docs. You can see them anytime. They're where you need to put your questions. The admin team reviews them all with Richard Zimman personally. And so we'll bring them to the policy committee and recommend for.
Thank you. Clarification, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, who carries? The second is uh relative to Policy Eighty-six oh-one. Controlled substance alcohol policy for employees that transport students. So again, as Chairman Ferris reviewed, there was some language changes to that. So I'm looking for a motion to approve. The language updates to Act Eighty-six oh-one. I'll make a motion.
Awesome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, who carries? Okay, so I think we'll circle back. Posted as part of our consent agenda.
So Twenty-three forty, right? Twenty-three forty, we still have to finish. Recommended changes Twenty-three forty with, oh, with, with trips. So we did the controlled substances, but now we need Twenty-three forty. Is that correct?
Um, it's in the recommended changes.
It's in the top.
We just added it all together.
Yeah, done.
Sorry, it was a big long list.
It was.
Okay, so here is the. Posted August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, regular board meeting minutes. For your carousal. Everyone feeling comfortable in the review of the meeting minutes, right? Okay, um, so at this point, I'm looking for a motion to approve the full consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll move into other reports uh relative to WASB. Just a reminder that WASB offers gets Regional eleven Fall Regional Meeting on October thirtieth. It isn't booked yet. Registration is now open. One would like to attend, go to the WASB site and sign up. And that's pretty much it for WASB. I don't know if uh.
See you soon.
Got nothing more. Okay, uh, moving on to new business. Any prompts from members on what? Like to consider?
Maybe we should have a discussion on WASB. You know, we go, Washington School Board just withdrew from WASB and. Saved a few thousand dollars, I guess, or. I don't know. I don't know if anyone else feels like WASB is worth it, not worth it. Are we getting our money's worth?
I think it's worth having on the discussion, for sure.
Okay. I would, I would entertain that as well. I'd like to, you know, best understand uh. Our pricing, uh, what our, you know, what our, what our costs are for all of their, their full book of business every year. And uh, how much utilization we get out of them. The bank for the buck. I'd like that discussion.
You have a nice magazine. Kind of very informative, actually. Some of the things are great. What committee would that fall on?
Curriculum.
Curriculum. Convenience.
That falls under the snark category. There's a lot of sass in this room. Yeah.
I think it's a good one.
I don't know. To answer that question, I really don't, don't know. But, I mean, it, it kind of hits a lot of categories. And it could be under finance, it could be under policy.
Policy.
I'll take it. I'll take it. We've got our first topic for October first.
Okay. I know the gentleman brought up in regards to the safety drills, so perhaps this topic that we can bring up. And maybe, I don't know, where that falls in the policy, safety policy, safety drills.
Okay, number two.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, remind me, next month is, because we have the annual meeting. Is the annual, is the monthly meeting and the annual meeting back to back or the, on separate?
Two separate, there are two separate days. What we did um is, is did the back-to-back interview uh candidate, candidates on the ninth.
Okay.
Along with the board meeting.
Regular monthly meetings?
Yes. And then the annual meeting is uh sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
Did you say the next policy is October first?
October first, yeah.
Policy.
October today, no. So new business, agenda items.
Yeah.
I mean, anything else? If not, um, I'd like a motion that can be made close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five.
I'll make a motion.
One seat.
Oh, sorry. I, sorry, that was. I cut in.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Final year right there.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good night. We gotta dilute it. I am sassy.
I'm sassy.
I am sorry. I gotta dilute it. Been a long night.
Do you still have any? Some Kirsten. Can't recall.
Why so bad?
I'm trying to remember people's names.
Okay.
So, I'm so bad at that. So bad.
Was that my?
Yeah, I know. I saw that.
Right, right. I'm sorry.